I call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council from Monday, May 19, 2025, and I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as always, we find much to be thankful for in our role as those who are in charge of running the city of Batavia. We are having an outstanding staff of people working for the city, and they get a lot of good jobs done. Many of them require special extra efforts to do certain things that they seem to always be able to accomplish. And we certainly want to also make mention of all those who come forward and offer their support for the community in a variety of fronts. We are very fortunate as a town to have so many people willing to step forward and be parts of Flag Day programs or situations where we're helping the youth, high school sports programs. We're constantly out there as a community doing community things, and that's one of the reasons, I am told, many people want to move to Batavia is that we have all that to be so thankful for. So tonight, we just asked for a blessing on our community, and we ask for a special blessing on those from our community who are serving in foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we also are most thankful for those who are here to help each other and to help Batavia become the greater and grander place that it is truly becoming it is. And finally, we want to ask for a special blessing on all those from within our community who are suffering from some type of illness or health-related issue, and we just ask for a special blessing be showered upon them as they hopefully make their way to reclaiming a good health. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Anybody want to volunteer for pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Malley, absent.
Malone.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Farenbach.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Vocal singer.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
We obviously have the necessary form to conduct business. Reminder to everyone, if you're going to address us tonight, that if you would please come forward and use the podium here and specifically use the microphone because it is a key factor in whether or not you are being heard by those watching this on TV. And we do televise all these, and if you don't use the mic, you're kind of talking in silence. So we got to ask that everybody do that. Reminder in item four to please speak into the microphone if you're going to use it, and we will try to recognize anybody during the meeting that has a moment that they want to say something. We'll move to item five. Items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Does anybody in the council have anything they want to move or change?
Yes, Your Honor. In ordnance, item 16, the ordinance is for $9,795,000 instead of the $10 million that's listed.
I'm not following what you want to do here?
It's the numbers listed. There's a typo on the agenda.
Oh, typo on there, okay. Thank you for calling that to our attention, and the clerk will make a note of that. Anybody?
Beck, can you reiterate the number one more time for me? Sure. Item number 16 is for general obligation bonds in the amount of $9,795,000.
All right, that has been noted. Okay, moving then to item six, the approval of the consent agenda, and Alderman Beck, it's your moment.
Yes, Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole Minutes for April 29, 2025, and the Plan Commission Minutes for March 19, 2025, and for approval, the May 9, 2025 payroll in the amount of $1,067,282.68. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,365,417.18. The City Council Minutes for May 5, 2025. Resolution 2025-67-R, authorizing the execution of a contract for the JDS Government Center Roof Replacement and Fall Protection with Malkor Roofing of St. Charles, Illinois. Resolution 2025-71-R, approving a contract with Substation Enterprises Incorporated to purchase structural components for the main substation reconfiguration in the amount of $185,900, which includes a 10% contingency. Resolution 2025-72-R, approving Task Order 6 with Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories to purchase relay panel for the main substation reconfiguration in the amount of $109,646, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Resolution 2025-73-R, authorizing execution of an IGA with iDOT for routine maintenance of certain state roads. Resolution 2025-74-R, iDOT Resolution for Municipal Construction on State Highways. Resolution 2025-66-R, approving early termination for the cable franchise agreement with MetroNet. Resolution 2025-69-R, hosted phone system. Resolution 2025-70-R, phone upgrade. Resolution 2025-75-R, authorizing a master service agreement and Task Order Number One with sustained ability construction for green audit and grant program administration. And for motion, approve a bid to purchase the land west of 122 South Van Buren Street. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second, Alderman Beck, second, Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Beck.
Hi.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Farenbach.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Consent agenda is approved. Okay, moving to item seven, which is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does we have anybody this evening? Mr. Peoples, would you come forward and use the mic, please?
David Peoples, 525 North Avenue. I'm here tonight to thank the council for finally getting the Republic sidewalk plus a little bit on Maple Lane. I'm sure the general public, and especially the children of Storm School, are thankful for this, and the general public is glad that there have been no accidents. I use that area quite a bit, and I live on North Avenue. We had to put the sidewalk in many years ago to accommodate the Storm School, and now we finally got it for the Republic Road. I've heard few comments, mainly positive, a couple against it, but thankfully, they were able to move the sidewalk around the trees and save them. So anyway, thanks for the grant or whatever, we got that. And I only have one other comment. The mayor said about the people in Batavia. I was here a couple times, and I asked about the bag fee, and the mayor answered me, we got cloth bags. Well, the people who are on fixed social security, who don't have anything else, I proposed maybe you could find out and help them out a little bit so they don't have to move out of the town. Thank you for your help in these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, so we will move then to item eight, which is a presentation and an update on the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation program, and Jerry Ruth is here again, and he's also got his boss sitting in the audience here, so.
Yeah, look out.
If we get something we really want to yell at, we'll go to him.
Appreciate that, yeah. He can take it. All right. So this is your May update. Thanks for having me tonight. So at the treatment plant, we're moving right along still. The headworks you see in the photos, the main improvements that you're going to see are the progress in the exterior brick. It's coming right up on all of the buildings that we have proposed, but they're also doing HVAC and electrical inside both the headworks and primary clarifier control building. The primary clarifiers, we're installing interconnecting piping now, finishing our final tests and equipment startups. In the diversion structure in between the four new primary clarifiers, we're installing the gates, the diversion gates that are going to control flow through the plant, as well as hydrostatically testing that structure. I mentioned the primary clarifier control building. There's a little bit of process piping, but mainly at this point, it's the electrical and the exterior brick that's left. Final clarifier rehabilitation, they have three final clarifiers down there at the plant. We are through the rehab of two of them, and we're on the third right now, along with some repairs that we discovered we needed as we were getting into it, so that's moving right along as well. And in the sludge handling building, HVAC and roof installation has been ongoing. We got about half of the roof installed done for a part of the roof that wasn't touched in the last phase, and the HVAC that was on the second part of the roof was removed, and the new system is almost ready to be started up in the garage. So let's look at some photos. Offsite, just a quick snip, we got trees planted along the bike path. I've had a chance to go up and down the bike path. It seems to be running very smoothly, very well for the public. The exterior, the headworks, I mentioned brick. You're going to see a couple more photos, but the exterior doors were also put in. The brick is installed on three of the four sides of the building now. So here's an aerial from last month. This is on the south side of the new headworks building, and this is on May 3, so it's progressed a little bit from this point, but you see that wall is all the way up, and so is the door. Here's the north side of the building off of Flynn Street, and here it is by May 3, so in a month, they got that wall up too. Jumping over to the clarifiers, this is clarifier 401, the last of the four clarifiers that were installing the weers and launders and scum baffles and water testing it or hydrostatically testing it for leaks. Installation of the retaining wall between headworks and clarifier 404, and installing the guardrail around that because we have about an eight-foot drop from one side of the wall to the other. Here's that primary clarified diversion structure, lowering the gates into place and bolting them up to the concrete and hydrostatically testing that as well. Here's the interconnecting piping that I mentioned, connecting all the clarifiers so they can all operate in parallel. And these clarifier structures are all up. When you go out there next, you'll notice that there's a big grade change that I mentioned. All that elevation change is brought up by the stone, so there's a lot of stone filling in between the clarifier structures, and you'll see that on the aerial shot. As we build up, we're installing the utilities that have to be at certain depths underground. This is the duct bank that's going in, that's going to send power to the clarifiers so they can function, so that'll be all cast in concrete eventually. And the hydrant installation next to it, that'll help the odor control system function, so that unit is coming together. That'll be installed sometime over the next four weeks. So here's the aerial from April 5. If you look in the center of the screen, you'll notice that from then to now, we've filled up about four feet of stone all the way through that, just a lot of volume. So things are progressing nicely. And again, you see the really blue water in the upper left-hand corner that clarifier is getting tested. Clarifier 703, we had to replace some steps leading up to that for safety and access. When we were doing the rehab of the clarifiers, we realized that in the bottom center pier, there are eight bolts that hold the center pier together. It's basically the center of the foundation of the structure that rotates around this clarifier and spins, so the picture on the left is just a perspective of scale. That's Zach standing there next to the clarifier. And the bolts on the right, that's the modification we had to make to the base to replace all the anchor bolts that we found that had completely corroded away, so it was just held in place with weight and friction alone. So the rehabilitation came at the right time. This is the sludge handling building. This is a small section of roof that we replaced above it. To those of the photos, quick cost update and progress. So to date, just over $39 million spent on engineering and construction costs. Per their schedule and the days that they have allotted left, they're at 60% completion. Per the amount that they've completed and the payments that we've made, they are at In terms of change orders, there have been four change orders that have passed through, the most recent one being a net negative just over $10,000. So we're at about $13,000 for the whole project of around $43 million. That's the cost update. In terms of schedule, contractor's not really changing this much. He's keeping his cards pretty close to the vest, so none of these dates have changed, and the original final completion is still June of 2026. Based on current progress, though, I'm anticipating that they're going to hit their early finish dates, which is what I have up here, so the final clarifiers will be done next month. The new headworks should be substantially complete in August. The new primary clarifiers will be substantially complete in September. The new primary clarifier control building and sludge handling building should be substantially complete in October, so we'll be hitting the punch list in the fall, and the final completion should be about five months ahead of schedule. So I just wanted to address some recent questions that we've had, and before I invite Scott up here, I just wanted to note, anytime you guys have any questions about the project whatsoever, please feel free to contact me, email, call me, send me a text, whatever you want, but I'm here to answer your questions.
Anybody in the council have any particular questions? We got the main men here now, so.
I just want to know who the engineering crew was that did this, because to see that little bit of change for, you know, change orders on is just amazing to me on a project that size, that it's come out that close and that we haven't had the same kind of problems that we had in the past on some of these. So good job, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Ruth's done an amazing job here. So Andrea had forwarded some questions that had been forwarded to her, and we put together just a couple slides to respond to those particular questions. We could take any additional questions or provide a longer conversation later, but just to spend a couple minutes. So one of the questions was what prompted the upgrades? The answer is three elements: replacement, the regulatory issues that continue to happen, and the capacity concern. So was it end of life? Yes. All of the major equipment will be replaced through all of these phases. Most of the rotating equipment, the high-speed stuff, has a life of about 15 years. Slower speed like clarifiers, somewhere around 25 to 30 years. So if you look at the overall life of this wastewater treatment plant, I mean, we're replacing equipment on a regular basis. So from a water quality requirement standpoint, yes, NPDS permit limits are changing. We are addressing those through the upgrades and the improvements to this wastewater treatment plant, and they have been planned for, for an extended period of time. But ultimately, the plant needs to be expanded from 4.2 to 4.9 MGD. That was established in a facility plan done in 2008, so just to address those issues. So it's all three: its replacement, its regulatory, and its capacity to maintain the growth within the community. So what alternatives were considered? We don't want to go back to 1939, how we got here, but basically in 2008, there was a facility plan done that had a 20-year planning life, how we were going to expand the facility and address the community's needs. The three ideas that were considered were, if you looked at the entire facility planning area, we would require a nine-MGD plant, which is a very large plant. We considered a new plant to the southwest. We considered constructing a new plant to the southwest that was smaller and maintaining the downtown plant, and then we looked at expanding the downtown plant, and then the areas that would be served beyond the 20-year period, we had other ways to serve them. So that's how we got to the decision that we have today, that the existing plant was going to be upgraded to serve the community within the service area. How does Batavia's phased expansion compare with other communities? I will tell you that we serve 20 plants right now. Every plant is going through some form of upgrade, whether it's a replacement of solids handling, it's a replacement of a headworks, it's addressing biological processes. But if you look at all of your neighbors, so Algonquin's a plant that was upgraded for biological phosphorus removal in 2007, and again in 2021, that's 14 years. St. Charles has two treatment plants, 2019 and 2023. Fox Metro upgraded or expanded their plant in 2019. Forward, which is the Fox River Water Reclamation District, has three plants, that's the Elgin Sanitary District, 2008, 2020, 2023. Essentially, every major discharger on the Fox has to meet a 0.5 milligrams per liter phosphorus. By 2030, we're on schedule to do so. Are we better equipped to meet the future requirements? The answer is yes. The phased approach has allowed us to maintain operations on a very restricted site. As you know, we looked at other alternatives to relocate the wastewater treatment plant. There were very expensive alternatives. It was decided that we would stay within this site and do it a little bit at a time that would allow the community to continue to maintain compliance, but do it within the existing site. So we've replaced and upgraded the solids handling equipment. This phase, we're replacing the headworks and primary clarifiers and addressing excess flow issues. Also, the opportunity within this phase was to improve the hydraulic profile, so that as all flows get to the wastewater treatment plant, even during a major outage, major power outage or anything else, flow will flow through the wastewater treatment plant, be treated without having to be repumped again. So also within this phase, we were able to create space within the existing boundary required to expand and upgrade the biological process and add tertiary treatment to the treatment plant. So with respect to that, the next phase, what happens next, which is 2B, and that would address the capacity issue at the treatment plant as well as the biological phosphorus removal and provide tertiary treatment. That's when we will get to outstanding and excellent affluent quality in comparison with everyone else on the river. That's all I have for you this evening. Thank you very much.
Just forgive my ignorance on this. What is MGD?
Million gallons per day, sir.
Thank you.
On the equipment, do you have that all currently in hand, or is that still being fabricated?
All of the equipment for this phase of the treatment plant, it's all onsite. Most of it is installed at this point. It's a matter of electrical connections and controls and getting things started up. So Jerry and his team have done an outstanding job, and we're very, very close.
You know, one thing I would point out to specifically the new alderman here, these gentlemen have been through a lot of conversations with us on a variety of fronts, and one of the big ones was, I don't know how many years back this was, when our friends down at the city of Aurora announced that they were going to start withdrawing water from the Fox River to drink. And these guys went with us, and we kind of rose to the occasion on it, and I think that did help us maybe get a little bit more money from some quarters because we had to do some stuff to kind of maintain those standards. Now I have other cities, quite a few want to come and see this place when it's done, and I keep saying, well, we're not quite there yet. So maybe in a couple years, these two gentlemen will be tour guides for a whole bunch of other cities who want to see the right way to do it. And so we really have, you mentioned Algonquin, I had them down here near the beginning of this thing, and they were very well impressed by what we saw. So this has been a very positive, moving target in Batavia since we brought Trotter and Associates in to do this, and I'm very pleased with what's happened to this point in time. So thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody got any last questions for Jerry?
Speak now or wait a month.
We got just about all of the offsite restorations done, so I think we're in good shape there.
Just about.
Just about all of them.
One last note, you had asked, you know, who's responsible for making it this successful? It's not just the two of us, it's the people in the field and the people that are working at the plant. So I just want to mention Dan Gillespie, who is running the job day-to-day, every day. He's talking with our field staff. We got to mention Andrew Bucini and Jake Robinson, who've been out there full-time inspectors. Zach, Andrea, and Gary coming to our meetings and helping us through all the issues, and IHC, the general contractor and their project manager, Vincent Picardi, they've all been spectacular, so it's on their shoulders as well.
The crew you guys put together.
Thank you.
Dan? Thank you. All right, next, item seven, matters from the public. There's.
Nine.
Or nine?
Four.
All right. Water Street Studios year-end review.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jessica Jekman. I'm the president of the board at Water Street Studios, and I have several of our other directors and the manager of our school of art with us here tonight, so we appreciate you making some time on the agenda for us. We just wanted to come in and thank you. This time last year, we were having a discussion about a forgivable loan, and that went through, and so it's been a year since we had that conversation, and so it's time for us to report how things are going, and we just wanted to come in and give that quick review and answer any questions you might have. So happy to be here tonight. Many of you, I think, already know who Water Street is, what we do, so I'll do this quickly, but just as a refresher, we are just right down the street, and we, our goal is to really be a place for everybody in the community, specifically those with a passion around art, right? So we're a welcoming home for self-discovery, expression. We really want everybody to feel welcome in our doors, whether you appreciate art, you want to learn about art, anything that you want, or if you just want a place to come in and hang out and feel safe, that's us too. So we really have spent a lot of time and energy as a board trying to make sure that culturally we work on this and that this is a really welcoming and accessible place for people to express themselves. And we just thought we'd take you through a few of the things that have happened. We do have a gallery. We would invite you guys to come in. We're in the middle of what we call our membership show, so we invite members of our community and those who purchased an artist's membership to come in and participate in this show, so it's a really exciting one because it's over 60 unique artists. Many of them are based here locally, and they all have their art on the wall, and it's a really fun opening because they all bring their friends and their family. For some of them, it's the first time, bless you, that they've had their work showcased in a show, and so it's just a really fun, really one of our larger openings and a really fun one. So we do have, every second Friday of the month, we have a different gallery opening and a new show that's presented, with the exception of November, when of course we host Winterfest. But we've had almost between 2,500 and 3,000 people come in, so we've seen a significant increase in the folks that are coming in and attending those second Fridays. Part of that, I think, is because of our coordination and partnership with other businesses in what we're generally referring to as the arts district, but our sort of little corner there, and that seems to be nice because people know that regardless of if they know who is in the show or not, they can come around and make a night of it, make a date. We see a lot of new families coming in and checking it out, so. And then we've featured over 75 unique artists, again, many local, and we are trying to bring more and more people to come in and find the ability to showcase art at different points in their careers. We have a school of art, and we have really tried to focus in on the areas that we feel are making the most impact. We're about to enter into our season of summer camps, so if you have kiddos at home looking for things to do, that's a fun way to spend your time. We have over 800 different registrations, and we've had almost 300 different art classes. And we are still constantly playing with what's popular, what do people want, who are we doing this for. You might be surprised to know that many of our art classes are adult-centric. We have certainly lots of kids' classes, but I think a lot of local organizations focus solely on kids, and we have a lot of folks at different points in their lives or retirees who come in and really enjoy that we have classes at different times. So a little bit about our school of art. We do have our artist studios. We have 25 different artists that have a license agreement with us. We do have 100% occupancy right now, which is the goal. That is the basis of our agreement together, that we would sign off what we call an affidavit of success that says that we have met 75% of the filling of those studios or more, and so we are 100%, because we like to get an A. And so we have done that and coordinated that effort together, but we're really excited, and we have some new artists that are coming in, and we want them to be a really integral We've got 35 claymakers at this point. We have at least that many on a waitlist. So it's really a matter of our ability to bring people in. We just bought a third kiln and we had a ribbon cutting for it back at the holidays, which was really fun. She's got a name. Her name is Sweaty Betty. So we're keeping her active and she's been a great addition to helping us bring more people into this area of interest for us. And then we do outreach, which I think you guys might know about a little bit too. We do have a testimonial here on the screen, but we do outreach in a couple of ways. We have some reoccurring programs that we do. We go to some places and do what we call in-house programs. So for in-house, we go in by request usually and do something, a program of some kind, sometimes repeating. So we worked this last year with Northern Food Depository, Larkin High School. We do a lot of different homeschool groups, Geneva High School, Rising Lights, Emmanuel Lutheran School. We've worked with Girl Scout troops. So a lot of different organizations here. We do some things that have regular ongoing outreach programs. So we work with Mercy Housing, where we go onsite, Green Castle Senior Residence, Cape, which is Chicago Arts Partnerships and Education. In West Chicago, we do weekly after-school programs. So we've had some really reoccurring things that are bringing art into the community. And then we've done lots of things too. We try to get involved where we can. Of course, just this last weekend, we were at the Batavia Farmer's Market. We'll be there a couple more times with the community tent and the children's tent. We did the Batavia High School Art Fair, which just happened, Bat Fest. We work with both high schools and we find ways to get their National Arts Honor Society students to come in and volunteer with us. We're participating in the Geneva Arts Fair. So just trying to be out, making sure that we are present and being supportive of our community. And this, of course, I think you guys have seen, if you've been on the opposite side of the building here, this was our ribbon cutting for our public art big project that we did this last year. So we partnered with the Conservation Foundation and we brought 10 new murals here to Batavia and they are gorgeous. They just outlook right onto the river. And this has really received a lot of interest and a lot of conversations have come from this. And so we are really excited about some of the upcoming plans that we want to do, including what we are calling a gateway mural. And we're hoping to get on an agenda here in the next meeting or one of the meetings here shortly to talk a little bit about this with you. So we want this to be a welcoming mural, something that welcomes everybody into town, that really reflects Batavia's charm and our community pride and give, you know, help people sort of sense that that identity. So we have the support of the owner, the property owner, and we're pretty far into discussion about the art of the possible here. And so we'll be sending a more detailed summary and happy to talk about questions and give more details. So that's what we've been up to. We have the most of the board here with me. We've had a pretty solid board and stability of staff, which I think, like a lot of organizations, we've had to really sort of rebuild since COVID and I think that is going very well and we're very pleased with our progress. And again, we're so appreciative to you all for your support. Can I answer any questions? Or does anybody have any comments? Yes.
I know that you mentioned you're going to be at the Geneva Art Festival. Are you going to the St. Charles one this this week?
We don't have plans to yet. We're working the Arts Fair Children's booth, so they have a very specific time that they requested us to do it, but we are open. If we'd like, if you'd like to make an introduction, we'd be happy to have that conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Anybody else?
Anyone else?
I just wanted to commend you and your leadership of this board and to all the board members who I know are volunteers but work far beyond normal volunteer orders, hours to keep this organization growing and thriving despite all the challenges since COVID. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for all the hard work that you put into this really important mission and really important corner of our town.
You know what? I used to live near Water Street Studios and my wife and I basically had our kids there every weekend. And for the parents in town who are not familiar with Water Street Studios, I recommend getting very familiar with it. Their classes are great, especially during the summer when the kids are running around going crazy. It's good to get them some inspiration. And then my, both my kids ended up with a really intense interest in the arts because of Water Street Studios. So definitely an unappreciated treasure we have here.
Thank you.
And I guess I would like to comment, I'd like to publicly thank you for the presence you have created in what is downtown Batavia. And I have a number of people, other mayors, again, want to come in and I tell them, well, Saturday morning is probably the best time to go over and see what's going on over there. But there's a lot of people that take great interest in what you're doing and they go in and see some of the art that's being created and they really become fast fans of what you're doing. And then many of them, I'm sure, are trying to negotiate of whether you could paint something for them or sell them what you got or whatever. And that's what it is. And I really think it's a, it's a great story of Batavia, what you now do in that building when you consider the fact that, you know, back in about 1942, 43, that's where the US government was making military shells to fire at the enemy in the war. And so they talk about a great change in use of the building, but it has quite a picturesque history associated with it. Before the shells, there used to be a windmill factory and they powered that factory mostly with water power because they had the river. In some areas, they're running right underneath the building. So it's got quite a history to it. And you're making another chapter in that history, quite unique and grand. And so I just wanted to publicly thank you for everything you're doing to kind of spin this along. And not only do you have people from Batavia oohing and ahn, but you've got a lot of people from several states in here looking at this thing and saying, boy, this is a great idea. Wish we could do this in our town. But remember when you got to have good people like you've been able to attract to your board and the people who are down there. So we're just blessed all over the place by how this has all come together. So thank you.
I really appreciate that. We have coordinated actually and given tours to other arts organizations who do contact us and ask about how we set up. So I think that, to your point, is a really nice compliment and also I think just builds community on a broader sense about everybody who's having a shared mission. So thank you so much.
Anybody else? Well, thank you for coming down.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Then I guess the next thing we're going to go to, changing the topic a little bit, is item 10, which is a proclamation for Motorcycle Awareness Month for May 2025. Alderman Beck, you want to read this?
Proclamation. Whereas safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of our city and state, and whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education and awareness, and whereas motorcycles are a primary, common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption, consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion, and whereas it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadway and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the members of the Abate of Illinois, a brotherhood aimed toward education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education and awareness in high school drivers, education, thank you, programs, and to the general public in our city and state presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 120,000 participants in Illinois over the past nine years. And whereas all motorcyclists should join Abate of Illinois, Inc., in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness and respect of the citizens of our city and state. And whereas the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable organizations. And whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of the roadways within the city of Batavia and throughout the great state of Illinois. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shilke, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the city of Batavia, Illinois. Your honor, I move we approve the proclamation as read.
One second. One second. With the approval of the motorcycle proclamation, any discussion from the council? Kirk call the roll. I'll let you speak again.
Beck?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lomen?
Aye.
Peever?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
13 yes, no, no one absent.
Motion's approved.
Thank you so much to the city of Batavia and you, Mr. Mayor. I think we've met each other once or twice over the last bunch of years, but my name is Mark Arison. I am a proud member of Abate of Illinois. Abate is a brotherhood aimed towards education. What we do is promote safety, education and awareness, not only to the motorcyclists, but also to the motorists. Myself and two other members of my chapter, DuKane, we go into high schools all over DuPage, Kane, Kendall, DeKalb counties into high schools and talk to driver's ed kids about motorcycle awareness. Over the past couple of years, every year we have done more than 5,200 kids in driver's ed classes. And to me, that is, it's the way we need to do things. It's the way we need to do things. Educate, not legislate. As an aside, my sister used to live in this town. She's since moved out of state, but that's her problem, not mine. I, I appreciate the water arts, was it the water arts what? Oh yeah, because you got the kiss the sky down there. Those guys rock. And Everdine's, you brought Everdine's in? I love Everdine's. But I appreciate the city for doing this for us. We are out there and I care immensely about every other responsible rider out there. My wife rides, my son rides, I care immensely about them. I care immensely about every other responsible rider out there. And we try to get out there and talk to the irresponsible riders. Sometimes they think they're Superman and are not going to, anyways. But I appreciate this and if I can get a little photo op with you, Mr. Mayor, I'd be really, really appreciative of that.
Can you wait a minute or do you?
I got a phone. Don't we all have phones? Don't we all have cameras with phones on them?
I will say, as a longtime motorcycle rider, I've always felt like I'm a better driver because I anticipate anybody doing something that I have to react to, especially when you're on a motorcycle. So I totally get what you're saying about trying to get in and educate kids about that.
And that's a good point you bring up because when my son came back from Wyoming Tech Institute, we bought him a bike. And after about a year or two, he comes up to me, he says, hey, pops, you know, I think I'm a better car driver now because I'm riding a motorcycle. Because you have to be more aware. You have to be aware. And that's what I try to, to give out to these students that I talk to, that you have to be aware, regardless of whether you're driving a car or regardless of whether, you know, there's somebody on a road that's not in the same vehicle you are, you have to be aware of everything around you. And I appreciate that. I understand that. And, you know, there's things that happen out on the roadways. I used to, I used to ride from, from, well, I live in North Aurora now, or I was in Aurora for a while, up to Bloomingdale from where I, where I was working at the time. And there are so many inconsiderate drivers out on the roadways that I had been pushed off the roadway many times, whether it be I-88, 355, Army Trail Road, any of those. And it was just, it was just terrible. We moved out to Kane County to get away from DuPage County. And Kane County is just getting just as worse. I'm thinking, well, maybe we should move farther west and, but we can't do that because we're grandkids in the area. The wife would just kill me if I did that. So, oh, I'm sorry. Are you a council? You're a board?
Yes, I'm a council.
Okay, council. Thank you, council members. I appreciate it. Have a great day and a beautiful week, okay? Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion that we move item number 17 up in the agenda? There's a, I think the majority of the rest of the people here are here for item 17 and they might appreciate that. I second that motion.
Any problem with this? Anybody have a problem? Okay. Yeah, well, we'll do that one next time. Okay, moving to item 17, which is Resolution 2025-078-R, establishing a Batavia community flag as the official flag of the city of Batavia. Margaret, I guess you're the one that's on this show for this.
Yes, well, we have a few and we have our flags to wave. So thank you for having me again this evening. I know I covered it last time I was here, but we're asking for the final approval of approving the Batavia community flag as a official flag of the city. As I mentioned before, the reason that we came up with a flag initiative was because we saw how much our community rallied for our residents and for our businesses following the pandemic, that we really knew that we were all in this together. And we really wanted to harness that pride that we have in our town. And we thought, what a wonderful way to do it is with a new, a new flag representing our town. So I wanted to introduce our, I practice, vexicologist. Oh, I still didn't get it right. Marty, Marty Callahan headed up our committee for our flag day, or for our flag committee. So I want to give him a couple of minutes to speak. I do want to mention that these flags are produced locally. Flag Source is in town and they're, they're the producers of our flag. So it's a nice local project and 10% of the proceeds of our flag sales goes to the Flag Day Monument too. So a portion of your, of the purchase goes to support that. We're proud of that. We also want to let you know that if you would like to buy a flag, you could go to the bataviachamber.org site and purchase flags there and pick them up in our office. Okay, Marty?
Thank you. Marty Callahan Flagner, that's the unscientific term. So as she had said, she asked me to create this committee to help design a city flag because we don't even have one, much less a bad one. So that's a better starting point than having a bad one. Just wanted to kind of highlight the members of the committee. There was Margaret. There was Kathleen, who is also here. We had a couple other designers, Scott Salvati, who was a former alderman, now lives out in Elburn, Andrea Gascia Gonzalez, Chris and Tony Winner. Mr. Mayor was one of the voting members and in a shameless Illinois plug, I had my son also be on the committee because he's an eight-year-old nerd like myself. So why flags though? At the end of the day, it's just a piece of cloth, but it is a piece of cloth that people put all of their hopes and dreams to in a way that many have ultimately sacrificed their lives for. We will not be doing that with ours, much to my chagrin against going against Geneva. However, it is supposed to be a representation of what our community is. And the process that we had for this solidified that because at the end of the day, we had over 110 submissions from all over the world and the majority of them were students. That to me spoke more about our community than anything else could because when we had 60% of the students or of the submissions put in by our children, when trying to get them to do anything anyways outside of is amazing, but for them to step up and show how much pride and dreams they have about our community, that was amazing. And then it wasn't just a
We hired a consultant.
I'll do it. I will.
And it's funny because it's like, I think we spent like 60 grand.
The agenda, we're going to return to item 11, which is the proclamation for National Public Works Week, May 18th to 24th. Who's got this one to read?
I do, Your Honor.
Beck?
I hope I just closed it, so sorry. Proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week, May 18th to 24th, 2025, people purpose presence. Whereas public work services are an essential part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the effective operation of public work systems and programs such as water, wastewater, stormwater, streets, forestry, electric, refuse collection, and snow removal; and whereas the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life of this community greatly depend on these services; and whereas the City of Batavia's Public Works Department is responsible for maintaining and managing essential public infrastructure, facilities, and services, including cemeteries, city-owned buildings, parkways, roads, and streets, and utilities; and whereas to carry out these responsibilities, Public Works is organized into six divisions, each specializing in key areas. Electric manages the entire electrical distribution system, power outages, electric service connections, underground utility locating, and tree trimming along power lines. Engineering oversees infrastructure design and construction, stormwater management, development project reviews, and construction oversight. Public Properties and Services maintains city-owned buildings and facilities, manages city vehicle maintenance, and oversees facility capital improvements, refuse, recycling, and brush collection. Street maintains roadways, forestry, downtown business district upkeep, storm sewer conveyances, storm plowing, snow plowing, cemeteries, and leaf collection. Wastewater operates and maintains wastewater treatment, lift stations, and oversees capital improvements. Water and Sewer handles water production, treatment, and distribution, water main repairs, sanitary sewer maintenance, and utility meter services. Whereas in 2024, Batavia's Public Works Department with 70 employees successfully achieved the following. Wastewater treated 1.389 billion gallons of wastewater and oversaw an ongoing 42 million rehabilitation project. Sanitary and Storm Sewer rehabilitated 3,500 linear feet of storm and sanitary sewer using cured-in-place pipeliner, responded to 59 sanitary sewer backups, and replaced or repaired 93 sanitary services. Native area maintenance restored over 40 acres of detention pond facilities. Streets responded to 22 winter weather events and applied 1,852 tons of salt, cleaned and televised 6,206 linear feet of stormwater conveyance. Forestry planted 396 trees, trimmed 1,022 trees, and removed 168 trees. Refuse and recycling collected 8,212 cubic yards of leaves, 1,491.48 tons of recycling, 7,322.45 tons of refuse, and 1,080 tons of yard waste. Electric Utility issued 27 residential EV charger rebates totaling $13,500, responded to 660 electricals, electric service requests, dispatched crews for 140 outage calls, replaced 89 street lights, and 1,416 electric meters. Roadway Infrastructure resurfaced 18 lane miles of streets and replaced 760 squares of sidewalk. Water, 868 million gallons of water produced, treated, and distributed, 114 lead service lines replaced, 670 water distribution samples drawn, repaired 35 water main breaks, 4,130 hydrants flushed, and dispatched to 2,883 service requests. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through May 25, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the City of Batavia, and call upon the residents to recognize the vital contributions of our public works professionals and extend appreciation for their tireless efforts in maintaining and improving the infrastructure that supports our community. Your Honor, I move we approve the proclamation as read.
Motion to second for the public works proclamation. Any discussion? Quite a story.
Amazing.
I just want to say one thing. I had the honor of attending the Public Works Department last week at a third-grade field trip, and they are phenomenal. The entire staff did great, and it was awesome job. So it's not ever mentioned in this proclamation, but even that going above and beyond and hosting them was great.
Thank you. We have a motion in second for that. Kirk call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulpha?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peever?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Now you're at the podium.
Yes, I just wanted to say about our Public Works Department, I think the theme here is that not all heroes wear capes. These people go quietly about their jobs every day, taking care of things that all of us might take for granted, that the water is clean and clear and has won awards as the best tasting water in the state of Illinois, that our electric utility recently received an award for being among the 25% most reliable municipal utilities in the United States of America. But not only are they there doing the day-to-day work that it takes to make sure that everything runs smoothly and everything looks great, they're also there at the times when we need them the most, when the weather is at its most horrific and electric is going out and we're all hiding in our dark homes waiting for the lights to go on, that's when they spring into action. When we had the EF0 tornadic events a couple of years ago, they were all out there getting our streets restored and passable and making sure everyone was safe hand in hand with our public safety personnel. So if Andrea and Dave would come forward and be recognized, Andrea is our Director of Public Works, Dave Hartnett is our Superintendent of Streets, and they're gracious enough to represent the department tonight to accept the proclamation. So thank you very much. We're honored. You guys should be honored for the work that you do, and we're all so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. And I would ask that this be approved. We, a number of years ago, we looked at the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, and we had some people on that didn't really know much about fire and police. And so we came up with the idea that we had some good retired people. In this case, Dennis Anderson is retired chief of police, and Randy Zeiss, who was also on the board, is the retired deputy fire chief. And then we have Nancy Vance, who is a retired alderman from the city. So we got all the parts of the city covered. They've done a wondrous job of finding and recruiting and hiring very good people in the Fire and Police Commission the last few years, so I'm very pleased with this. So I would ask for, we got to, once a year, reappoint one of them, so I'd ask that tonight we approve Dennis Anderson.
So moved.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulpha?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peever?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
Thank you. All right, moving then to item 13, the Main Street Report. We have the highly talented executive director here. Beth?
Well, thank you.
Local TV star, too.
Yeah. The things you do for your job, you never knew you were going to do these things, but you just do them. So anyway, thank you for having me. First of all, I wanted to talk about the Boardwalk shop opening. It opened last weekend. We had great weather and a great turnout. We had 330 raffle entries, and those are just the entries we received. Excuse me, I know some shops still had some in their shops, but from the ones we received, 75 unique zip codes, which was a 10% increase from the previous year. So we were really happy about that. Last week, Kristen and I, as well as one of our board members, Amy Larson, and a BEI representative, went to Alito for an Economic Vitality workshop. It was really interesting workshop. It confirmed a lot of our placemaking, things that we're doing, that we're really going in the right direction, as well as gave us some ideas of how we can continue to work with the business community, to support them, as well as, you know, potentially increase our work with the property owners. So that was great. And then last Thursday, we held our annual meeting where we voted for our new board of directors. Andrew Wallace, who has served on our Boardwalk Shop Committee for the last two years, as well as, he helped with Dinner Table, and he's on our Design Committee, was, became a new board member, as well as Joe Hunt, who serves on our Cocktails in the Park and Farmers Market Committee. So we're really excited to have them join the board. And then we said goodbye to one of our long-serving board members, Amy Moore. She also serves on the Plan Commission here at the city. So we'll be very sad to see her leave, but she's going to stay on with the Farmers Market Committee. And then last weekend, we had the Farmers Market and the Artisan Collective for the first kickoff of the season. It went really well. First of all, thank you so much to the city for doing such an amazing job getting the parking lot ready, so the market went off without a hitch, even with the construction. It was windy, but that was out of everybody else's control. We still had a great turnout, and we look forward to that, you know, every week. And then finally, here you go. We were able to secure a segment on Good Day Chicago to promote the Boardwalk Shops. It was a much longer segment than we anticipated, but really excited to have the opportunity to get as many eyes on Batavia as possible. So yeah, that's about it for I Have You. I did forget to mention, Laura sent me a thing, WBEZ in Chicago sometimes did name our market one of the top 15 in the Chicagoland area. It was funny because when she called, she didn't say what she was asking questions. I thought it was just overall, so it was a nice surprise to see that that's what that was for. So yeah, we have a lot going on and, you know, keep working. So does anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
I just have a quick story to tell. I'll make it real quick. My mom came into town for a late Mother's Day thing. I took her to the Boardwalk Shops because I knew it would be her jam, right? She, of course, loved it, walked out with a couple yak bones. Somehow my kids ended up with some stuffed animals. My daughter still talks about the dog we didn't buy at the shop. And she lives in Belvedere, she's gone back, and she's going to bring three of her friends down to go to the Boardwalk Shops. The exact text she sent me on the drive home was, "Batavia is impressive."
That's great. That's what we want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you for the great job you're doing. We really are setting the world on fire with other towns getting envious about what's going on in Batavia, and I gotta credit a lot of that to Main Street and to the Chamber of Commerce for what you guys are doing, because it really has caught the air and the attention to a lot of people. And as I've said, we have several mayors that are now planning to come in the next few weeks, just to, I guess I'm going to escort them around, so if you see me walking around with some people you don't recognize, that's what's going on, so.
So one thing I did forget to mention is that next month, we are starting to work with a PR firm for a three-month commitment. This was one of the things that we were able to do with a new marketing initiative grant from Illinois Main Street. So the goal of that is to hopefully get, secure more spots on Chicagoland television and just continue to get more people to come to Batavia.
Thank you.
All right, I'm just gonna need my readers to turn this off. Thanks.
Right, moving then to 14. Motion, TIF support request for proposed multifamily development in the 400 block of South River Street. You all sat in on a very lengthy meeting about this the other night, so I'll let somebody take.
Does anybody have any questions on it or anything? You know, I think this is a really worthwhile thing that we're gonna, you know, get into here. I think it'll be, you know, an agreement that we'll have to make sure we get everything that we would like to see in it, to try to make it the best project that it can be. I guess I'm really excited about the fact that I think this is a great place for this to be at. I think it's close enough to have, you know, easy connections to downtown, and I think it provides housing stock that we just don't have. Talked to a couple of people over the weekend about construction of just the most simplistic apartment you could design and put in, similar to a dorm room, and they don't even know if that would turn anybody to look at it if we were trying to get that built here. So unfortunately, I think this is the way we need to go, and, you know, I think it's something that we need to support as a council, and try to get whatever housing options we can get in town and get them built while we have the space to build them. That's my sales pitch.
Yeah, I'll just sort of agree with Alderman Wolf there. On a lot of that, we need housing stock. I think that this is a great location. Also, just from sort of our, should we use TIF funds for this? Seems like a no-brainer to me, right? The TIF fund is designed to improve the region, the district that it's in, and this would, without a doubt, turn a literal rock field into, you know, someplace people can live. So to me, as far as using TIF funds, to take the next couple steps, see if it builds, makes a lot of sense, so.
On top of that, I would suggest that, given the size of the project, if it does manage to go through, it should refill the TIF fund with property tax revenue in a, it's just a number of, a couple of years, I would suspect, depending on what that final property tax revenue looks like. So just for $1.2 million, it's pretty much a very, like, you know, short-term payback investment, so it'd be good for the city, I believe.
How many more years are left on that TIF that's in?
Twenty-three.
It'd be twenty?
Twenty-three.
Twenty thirty-nine? Okay. You know, and again, that's one of the things when we go through this agreement, that we have to figure out, you know, how much of this is actually taxable.
Well, we've had this discussion already with the developers, that we did not want it to be a tax-exempt property.
Okay.
That was very clear as part of our initial discussions. And so that's part of what the partnership, I think, would be, is to make sure it is a taxable property.
Okay.
That it will be generating TIF increment to pay it off, you know, essentially pay off what we.
And it's not $11 million that has to be paid back, so it'd be a little easier.
As we discussed at the council meeting, there's a few hoops to have to be done through here before this really.
But I think it's something we need to support. So I'll make the motion that we do TIF support request for proposed multifamily development in the 400 block of South River Street.
Second. Motion in second. Any further discussion? Alice, did you?
A second.
Oh, second. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulpha?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peever?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 15, approval to authorize the fireworks permit for the Batavia Fireworks Committee. I just would note that I don't think in practicality, it should, this should be the 75th anniversary of the Batavia Fireworks Show, because this thing was originally started in 1950. And there's been a couple of times that things have happened that they haven't gotten it off on the night that it was supposed to be there. But this, for all intent purposes, I guess the committee is calling it the 75th Annual Show, and they're trying to come up with some special demonstrations and displays. So out at Batavia High School or south of it on the Fourth of July will probably be the biggest crowd we have each year in town on any night is that display, is everybody comes, and many people from other towns come by because we have a reputation for such a good show. And so, somebody want to care to make that into motion?
Make that motion.
Second. Motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malone, for the approval of the fireworks permit. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulpha?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peever?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 16, which is ordinance 2025-032, an ordinance providing for the issuance of approximately $10,565,000 in general obligation bonds. Who's got this one on the council?
I do, Your Honor. So we received a memo with the agenda that was kind of a shell, because the bids were actually being opened today for our general obligation bonds that are going to be paying for parts of the construction of the wastewater treatment plant and then rehabilitation of our lift station. Our bond counsel recommends that we go with Fidelity Capital Markets, and we received further information from Peggy this afternoon. Do you want to say more about that bid or why we chose them?
I'm just up here to answer any questions if you have any questions about the bond issue today. Unfortunately, the rate is much higher than our last bond issue, which was in 2020. But very, the bids were good considering the environment that we're in today.
And our credit.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. You have a question?
Not much of a question. So the funny thing about this, we talk about it a lot, but I don't think people realize you can buy these bonds, these bonds on the municipal, they're on the municipal market. You can invest in Batavia. It is not a problem. They're open to consumers. You can buy through major brokers out there. And then more importantly, our credit rating now matches that of the United States from Moody's. So we are on par. We are a solid investment. So feel free to contact your broker and put your money where your mouth is if you love Batavia.
We did one time buy a City of Batavia bond for our portfolio. It just happened to be at the right price at the right time, and so we held one here, and we also do buy municipal bonds of other local municipalities.
We could own Geneva.
We did have a City of Geneva bond. Oh, no.
I'd blow that up on a big giant poster.
Do we have a motion in second?
I move reapprove ordinance 2025-32.
You made the motion?
You probably have to read the.
I want to read the whole thing.
You have to read it in, and also with the correct number in it.
Okay.
Just so it's in the.
It's going to say.
I want to make sure it's right.
Me, too.
Done this enough.
All right, I move we approve ordinance 2025-32, an ordinance providing for the issuance of approximately $9,795,000 general obligation bond, Series 2025, of the City of Batavia, Canton, DuPage Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of financing capital improvements in the city, including construction of a wastewater treatment plant and rehabilitation of a lift station and a force main, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest of said bonds and authorize the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Second, for the approval of ordinance 2025-032. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulpha?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peever?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. And just to add to, because the description indicates that a tax will be levied, you will see an abatement resolution each year to abate the tax levy because of the bonds would be paid with revenues from the wastewater treatment plant. Thank you.
All right, so now it's Laura Newman's turn again to talk about tables in the street.
Yes, I received a request from Beth Walker last week. She, we were talking about some signage that we're going to put on the fencing that's around the ramps project, and so they're going to be erecting some four-by-six signs on two sides to encourage people to utilize the businesses in our area, because sometimes when people see construction fencing up, that acts as a bit of a deterrent for people going over there, but not Batavians, because we support our small businesses. And then she asked if we were going to put tables out on North River Street this year. And honestly, I had recalled that we were at first working with a business on River Street last year who ultimately decided not to have tables, but Alderman Wolf reminded me that we actually did put some tables out in order to support the farmers market. So I had a further conversation with Beth, and she said the business that contacted her said they would like to have those tables out for the farmers market customers, because otherwise they're finding that when they come and show up to their business, people have used their tables, and they're all dirty, and they're the personal tables for their business. So Beth and I discussed putting two tables in the area of Tuskegee, and then also two tables adjacent to the public parking deck. An alternative, because one of the aspects about tables is that people put the stuff on top of them, and they become dirty, and we don't have, you know, city employees working over the weekend, and so it's not until Monday that they would get cleaned. But another thing we could look at is utilize or purchasing benches that are consistent with the Streetscape plan that the city had adopted in conjunction with creating the Win Earth in the first place. So I wanted to get your input and ideas about that versus the tables.
That would be an interesting idea. Benches, if we were to go with something similar to what we have down there. I guess my concern is, is we're going to have a big construction box fence that's going to be right alongside of one of the entrances to the farmers market. And the tables that were utilized along that raised walkway behind or right out in front of Tuskegee, there's probably room for four tables, I would think, in there. I think would be a really good spot, because that's where a lot of the food is located, down towards that end of the farmers market in the morning. And I think, again, you know, with that being something that would be available for people, I think that would make that more attractive to utilize for that. The other thought I had was, is there's the space next to Main Street's booth, that's actually that gravel entryway into there. That may be a way where we would have it more so on city property than out for other people to use, other restaurants to use. And then I'm not sure on the west side of the street, because there really is nothing anywhere Bar Evolution was, is that space in there available maybe to put a couple tables there? I'm just trying to find some space to try to encourage people to, you know, buy food while they're there and then, you know, consume what's there, because there are a lot of things that are available hot and ready to go on Saturday morning.
One of the things we were just trying to avoid, the primary traffic is, like, it is open to traffic during the week, to try to not create anything where a pedestrian would likely be walking in the same path that the car is going to be traveling on the one way.
And I think on that, it would be like in line with the statue that's there and the tables that are, or the benches that are already there, if that was an opportunity. I just don't want to see the tables that we have sit in a storeroom. I'd like to see them out in the city. I mean, if there was somebody that wanted to use them on the west side, and we could find a place for them, I would gladly try to work that out and get that done, just because I think we need to take the lessons that we learned during COVID and everything else and provide as much assistance as we can when we know there's going to be a big crowd in town, so that the businesses can take advantage of it, so that the people that are there trying to, you know, sell the things that they brought to the market get to sell everything that they have. that they have. I'd love to see everybody sell out by noon every week. That's not reality, but whatever we can do to help that, I think we need to do that.
For those who aren't aware, we purchased those tables during COVID, during that time when the restaurants and the bars were not able to host patrons inside of their businesses. We have received, when we put the tables further south on the street, we have received some negative feedback from other businesses that would like to see furniture that's more consistent with what the Streetscape Plan was, which that was the thought of keeping them to the north. But bar evolution is still pretty far to the north end of the street and hopefully that would kind of.
It's kind of a dead zone right now, so maybe.
Answer both needs.
Help that out.
Yes.
So it's sort of big picture. We, of course, have right now with the construction going on and we want to make sure that we're getting folks down there. But sort of long term, I know that River Street is a draw. We bring people in on that and we want people down there sitting, enjoying food, doing whatever. Do the, this is a half-formed thought, so bear with me here, but are the businesses and the city meeting in any sort of regular, at Main Street, any sort of regular interval to kind of figure out, when are we closing the street? Who's managing these tables? What are the actual needs of all the businesses in sort of a working group setting so that we don't run into the problem where, you know, maybe on the south side, they don't want the benches, but on the north side they do? Well, if we collaborate and we talk about it, we know who's cleaning them, who's using them, and then we're not kind of wasting time, effort, and energy.
Yes. So at the beginning of last year, we created a special event process where if people wanted to host events and close the street off, there is a process for them to apply to the city to do that. So we work with the businesses on an individual basis to see what we can, you know, how we can accommodate the events that they want to host. Some of the feedback we received from other businesses during the times when it was the COVID times and the street was completely closed, was that that had negative aspects on their business when the street was not closed, I'm sorry, the street was closed and there were no events. That didn't seem like that was serving those other businesses that rely on patrons the other dates and times of the week when there aren't events.
Yeah, and so sort of the short answer, I guess, is that right now, no, they aren't meeting regularly. There isn't any sort of working group occurring where the businesses are speaking with each other, Main Street, Chamber of Commerce, and the city. Like, we're not, we don't have any sort of meeting of that sort occurring on a regular basis.
Not that the city is involved in, but, you know, that's one of the things we rely on Main Street for. We talk to Main Street on a near daily basis and part of their role is that ombudsman voice for our downtown businesses and then our chamber acts in that same regard for our business community at large.
Good question. As long as we're talking about it, the tin shop demolition, is that, that's happened at the same time the ramp is under construction?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's all happening this year. And based on this, talking about additional seating, we've hired a landscape architect to design an area and we're going to talk to them about incorporating bench seating into the, I'm going to call it parklet, that is associated with that space.
And I'm assuming with the tin shop demolition, we'll be issuing a RFP around that property?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. People have done that.
Yep.
We have, okay.
We're mid-RFP at this point. We haven't opened bids yet.
That's what we do on June 13.
Yes.
How do we distribute those RFPs? Is that?
We publish it, notice in the newspaper, we publish it on our website, but then also we know of interested parties, we will send it to them directly.
Okay.
So if you know anybody that's interested to bid on it, you know, let us know, we could send them a copy of it.
And the Civics Plus site has an area where people who are interested in knowing what bids we have out, they can sign up for text messaging to receive notice of bids.
There's also a robust bidding community out there that know and then there's these parties that aggregate bids and they'll send them to the people and they'll sell that. So it's pretty well-known.
Yes. I just had a question you could clarify for me. I remember that on River Street, they had lawn games and then we had it shut down, I think for special events, right? Like the Sidecar. Yes. Supper Club would do their trivia night and they would have tables there. Are the lawn games from the city or is that from a business? The lawn games, my understanding, were provided by Main Street. Like, they had a giant chess set there, yes. And that was when the street was closed. That's not happening anymore. No. So where is that now? Does Main Street still use it? Yeah, they probably have it in storage. But I don't think that they take it out during the farmer's market. They have so many vendors that want to be part of that farmer's market. It's like a puzzle that they have to put together every week to try to accommodate how many businesses want to be there. I'd like to suggest we could try to find a place for it, like Alan said, with those tables. If we have it, it'd be nice to use it. I remember walking down River Street and it was always being used and people were excited to, it was community, community building. Right. That was back in the time when the road was closed, so now it's open to traffic and so we'd have to find a location. I'm talking about finding a different. Different location? To utilize it in the community, yeah. Okay. If people have suggestions about locations for that, please let us know.
I was just going to say one, and this will turn more on the parties involved, Main Street. I was thinking in the spot in front of where Seabold Boards and Bites is going in, if they might be interested in having it there.
I can contact, that's a private property, so I can see if the private property owner would be interested in having it down there.
It'd be, I think, a good sort of use for that area if they like it, especially with what they're putting in there, you know? It's almost like a front demonstration of it being a board game restaurant, so. But obviously, again, that's their business, not necessarily our own, but it's just a thought.
Sure. Good.
Very good. All right. Do you have another report?
I do have some other things. Dave Hartnett was here earlier and he made mention to me that the signage on South Water Street alerting motorists that there are bicycles that are going to be joining from this new path has already been installed. And then also the bumpouts and bollards have been returned to the intersection of First Street and South Water Street. Also wanted to, you know, announce to the community that all of our alderpersons are going to be present at the farmer's market on June 14th, which is Flag Day, opportunity to meet and greet the representatives of your ward. The interior buildout for Duchess Cannabis Dispensary at 144 South Randall Road has been issued. This week, the, I'm sorry, last week, the Public Works Department hosted eight local grade schools with 427 third graders to learn about the water and sewer engineering, electric, and street division work. And it's really a fun time around here because the kids are so interested in what they see over at Public Works and it's, you know, a pleasure to see that interest and talk to them about the things that we do every day. The Bulldog Tower on the west side will be cleaned next week and for a fun time, you can look up on YouTube, if everybody remembers, the Batavia Talking Water Tower. It was something that was done by Ramblin' Ray Stevens for his radio program and it was in anticipation of the upcoming football season. Very, very funny. But it's going to be sparkling white, ready for this year's football season. All the hanging baskets have been placed downtown this week. It's something everybody looks forward to, like the sign that spring is here, makes our downtown look awesome. And I want to thank our streets crew for installing all of that. The audit will be presented at the Committee of the Whole Meeting on June 24th. And that's all I have unless anybody has any other questions for me.
Questions? Anybody in the council have any other business? All right, we'll go into the mayor's report. I'm going to keep this very short, but one thing I would like to share is I've talked to most everybody now that's been elected and some of you who have been here a while. And one thing that's come up with several of you is, is that they think it would be good if we maybe had a meeting with the other governmental bodies in town, maybe with the city and the school board and the city and the park board and the city and the library board. Now, this wouldn't, this is not the first time this has been done. It was, it was done, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago. And it was a bit of a challenge because we had some trouble getting everybody together on certain nights. And so as it's worked out, Laura and I are going to have some opportunities in the next few days to meet with the representatives of these three boards. And so I'm planning to bring it up to them and say, do you think your school board would be willing to come some second or fourth Tuesday night and to a Committee of the Whole Meeting of the City Council? And we would just entertain a conversation about things that are going into town and if you have any questions. And it's just the idea here, so all of you meet all of them and so that we aren't a bunch of local governments of strangers, that we all know each other and can talk to each other and hopefully come together on some ideas. So we're going to start, try to start this and I just want everybody to know that we're out there trying to put this together. I'll keep you posted. But as I say, Laura and I are having some meetings this week with some of these other folks, not their whole boards, but some of the leadership. So we're going to test this and see if it will go. I think it will and I think it would be very good to do it. And one of the things maybe we should do is, is we need to move around in the buildings we meet in because the Park District's going to have a new building to show and the Library's got some new things up there and the School District's got some new directions in their building. So it's good that we all, but the most important thing is, is that, you know, when you consider there's, you know, about another 21 electeds and then you're 14, there's about 35 of you in Batavia that are elected by the public to, throw the township in on this, it's another five. Anyway, so there's, there's some folks that need to know who each other is, I guess is the idea here. And so we're going to try to put, not trying to push anything or any idea, but just get to get together and develop a little relationship as to what we're all about and what was going on, you know? We've got some interesting things in Batavia right now. It's out here on the west side at Main Street and Nelson's Lake Road, the Kane County Forest Reserve has now assembled 1,641 acres of farms out there to build what will be the largest forest preserve in Kane County. And that's, probably should have some input from all of us as to what, how they're going to do it, what they're going to put out there and how it's going to kind of come together. And I'm sure some of you, if you think about it, we go out there and look at it, you'll